Hey guys, um, welcome back. I know it's been a minute, two months to be exact, since we uh recorded this episode. And yeah, we took a bit of hiatus, apologies about that, life got pretty crazy, but now that we're out of that, we should be going back to a normal two-week uploading schedule, so in the next uh two weeks you'll be seeing another episode cranking out of us. We have a bunch of exciting interviews planned on the horizon and we're coming back in the summer harder than we have before, now that we have more time to focus on the podcast. Um, thank you for coming back and listening. This interview was filmed in accordance to COVID uh guidelines and procedures. Thank you.
And we're live.
Hi guys and welcome to the fourth episode of the Three Goons Podcast. I'm your host, Justin Winston, with my other two co-hosts.
Noah Randolph.
And Clinton Dillard.
And today we are joined by, joined by none other than...
Mike Hart, Commissioner in District One, Calver County.
Yeah, so, so tell us, uh, Mr. Hart.
Mike is good.
Mike, alright.
Already on first-name basis.
Um, tell us, how much does the local government really interact and work within the community? Are there more visible things or invisible things that are behind the curtain that people may not notice?
So, as a whole, as county government, we're in everything, from parks and recs, you know what I say about parks and recs? From the time you're born to the time you die, there's something at parks and recs. Whether it's your mom pushing you around in a carriage there, to you walking your dog when you're 190 type thing, you know, we're, we're in everything. Um, whether sports teams, everything. Now, it snows, we're there, we're plowing the roads. Um, you know, county government, if you want to even spread it to law enforcement, you know, we're, we're there, you know, um, medical services, all that. So, we're, we're in, we're in more of your life, probably on a more intimate level than state and federal government, just because we are, you know, your, your local representatives.
Okay.
Yeah, sweet. Um, what drove you to run for county commissioner?
I'll try to give you the, 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 the short story, but um...
We'll take the long one.
Careful. I never paid attention to politics. I never did. Um, when I was 18 and I went to renew my license, the girl said, hey, do you wanna register to vote? And sure, I said, you know, what is everybody? Well, during that time, it was like the Reagan era, she said, everybody's a Republican. Okay, you know, I'm a young guy playing music, just, you know, working and just, you know, just being a kid. And um, so I never really paid attention, to be honest, and, and Calver County back then, to kinda set the scene, you hear people say, you know, we had two traffic lights, three traffic lights. Well, try to picture, you know, when I grew up, there wasn't even the Solomons Bridge.
Oh wow, really?
Okay, one bus picked up Drum Point Ranch Club and Cove Point and took us to Calver High School. Got on the bus at six o'clock in the morning, got there at seven. So, try to picture, three channels on TV, no internet. I mean, we were very innocent. We're a very innocent generation, you know, and um, so they think of those things. But as you get older and you start to do more adult things and you start interacting with things, I um, I bought my first house, I was 21, and I was living in the Ranch Club, I had it built. I was so proud of myself, I couldn't stand it, my head wouldn't fit in the zip code, you know. Um, I um, and when I had my daughter, you know, I had never, so you're gonna hear me speak during the course of this, you'll hear me talk about family a lot. My biological folks weren't around a lot, and my real father died, and I'm, when you said a long story, you're getting it. My real father died at 50. He did two tours of Korea and one of Vietnam, so he was a real disciplinarian, but the Langfords had really kinda took me in. I spent most of my time there, so when you hear me say my mom and pop-pop, I'm really speaking to like, um, the, the Langford family and uh Ray and Betty Langford. Um, so um, I bought a lot on Cove Point Road and I wanted to build a house, really for my little girl. I wanted to have enough room for a swing set, um, I wanted to put a pool in, and I saved everything. I mean, me and my wife, we never made a ton of money, I mean, we just, I kid you not, I mean, it sounds like, it was like those stories, like I walked to school through wind and rain, 'cause I just wanted to get there. No, I mean, we truthfully had made this commitment that this is what we wanted to do. And um, she wouldn't, you know, I just, when she was born, I kinda looked at her like, what is this strange object in the room? You know, when people say, you know, oh, when I saw my kid. No, it wasn't like that. And when I went to get her from daycare, I guess, she probably about, no, about two months old or so, and she heard my voice and her arms and legs started kicking. I had never experienced anything that in my life, and I was owned. It was completely owned. She was daddy's little girl right then. Well, now I wanted to do everything in the world for her and, you know, so I wanted to put her in that house to grow up in and everything. So, I buy the lot and I lined up this guy to build me the house. I'm like, man, I just can't afford it, you know, I, I'm just gonna keep paying on this lot to pay it down and pay it down. And um, so one day, this friend of mine who had priced it out builder, he's just like, are you just gonna do this or what? So, got the courage, me and my wife, and we said, okay, we'll do it. Now, you gotta know, we weren't making any more money, but yet I bought this lot, and so I'm making a lot loan, I've got daycare, I've got formula, all this paint diapers, all this stuff, and our income's pretty set. So, it saved our money to get right to that point. And my builder, we put the permit in, and I'm gonna be a little off on the numbers, so folks, please don't nail me to this, but it's, but my permit was around like $4,300. Back then they called it impact fees and everything, so um, and every, I never will forget it, um, it was a Wednesday, every Wednesday, I would call my builder and I'd go, hey, is my permit done? Is my permit done? Is my permit done?
And what year is this?
Whew, let's see, uh, I should know it to the T. Going back to, I tell you guys, um, let's see, Lex is almost 20. Probably close to around 18 years ago, somewhere in that range. And Calver, well, my builder calls me, I never will forget it, I was a beer salesman. I was walking into a store to, to write the order, and my builder calls me, he says, Mike, I got good news, I got bad news. And this is God's honest truth, this is God's truth, it, it, um, uh, he says, I got good news and bad news. He says, the good news is your permit's ready. Says, bad news is, they increased the impact fees by $9,000.
Wow.
And I'm like, well, what's that got to do with us? Because, you know, we gotta be grandfathered to. $9,000 was like telling me a million dollars.
Yeah.
So, I'm devastated. How could this happen? You know, I'm blown away, you know? I'm a young guy, I'm like, how can this be, you know? And so, I called anybody that had a phone. And basically, it was legal, it was advertised, I didn't pay attention to politics. I didn't watch any meetings or anything like that, I didn't do that stuff, you know? So, um, I started paying attention, and I was probably in my mid-30s, and I, it burned me up, you know? And my brother, um, basically, because, because of him was where I got the $9,000 from, and to pay him back. Um, I was bound and determined, not, I'd already bought the lot, you know, I was so, I was so determined to build this house, because I didn't have a family growing up as a kid, but here was my shot. You know, here was my little girl, my wife, and I just wanted, I wanted all that magical type stuff, you know what I mean, type thing? So, um, anyway, um, I go through life and uh, I get the house going and um, we decide to build a store. And um, you guys know my store down there. And so, Steve Weems runs for county commissioner and wins. And I went to school with Steve from the time I was in sixth grade, and he was, I think, in fourth. And it brought it back up to the surface again. And I'm like, you know, I said, wow, I wonder if I could do that? Because I was so blown away that somebody could touch my life that way. I felt I did everything right. You know, I felt, you know, I, I, you know, I didn't go out and get the pizzas, and I didn't go to the movies, and, and I did everything right to wanna build this house, and how can somebody just with a pen stroke do this? I was so upset, just so unfair, and I knew life's not fair. But I learned a lesson in life that if you don't like a law, you change a law. And I can't stand that. I really can't. That boils my blood, and unfortunately, I belong to a fraternity, which is politicians. And I understand why we have that name, I really do. I hate it. I hate it with a passion, but I know that's a job I have. So, you have to embrace and accept it, but you don't have to buy into it, you know? And so, um, Steve did his term and I would ask him questions and ask him questions, and I started seeing that, I don't know, what would it hurt to try? Well, I have that obsessive personality back then, and I got it in my head, and I know nothing about running for politics. In fact, a woman had said to me one time, she says, Mike, it's obvious, you've never been on any kind of board before, have you? I was like, wow, it stands out that easy, huh? And um, and uh, but she was right. And I remember an article um, in the paper, there was two new people on the board. It was me and Tom Hegel, and basically, they said in the article, I was the weakest link. And I was so offended, you know, I'm like, wow. But it was true, it really was, because the three commissioners before me, they, they had been there. Um, they had been there at least, I think, uh, I think they'd all served one term. But Tom had been second-in-command at the sheriff's office, so he had so many interactions with the county. I was truly the newest, greenest type guy up here. And um, but um, you know, back to, uh, and you'll see, guys, and I apologize, I kinda...
It's all good, it's all good.
But um, so um, as I got going into this, and I started getting more and more pushing and pushing and pushing, the more stuff, and, and part of it, you know, you, you, you go, how much can I really affect? You know, you gotta have a little bit of dreamer in you, and I think that's part of me being an entrepreneur. I don't do well working for people, even though I work for 90,000 now, how funny is that? So, now I work for 90,000, but um, you know, I, I like to try to have a little control of things, of my life and things, I think, like most people do. And I just hate it that someone could do that. So, one of the very first things, and I kid you not, um, that, so, we have very limited government, believe it or not, and I'll tell you a story about a good buddy of mine in a second with this. But when I first got here, the board had voted on um, things to send to Annapolis to be put into law for local law. One of them was a thing called Quick Take. Basically, the state calls it eminent domains, and it means that if the county needs your property, they can buy your property from you at a market rate.
Back to government class.
And that blew me away. I remember as a kid, and I'm not gonna say their name, but there was this person that, I always loved landscape and, and, and stuff like this. He had, I thought, one of the best yards when I was a kid, and I watched Route Four go through it. And it tore it up, and I, and as a kid, I'm going, why would they tear this up just to do a road? Now, of course, you know how vital Route Four is, but I had never forgot that. So, I was talking to some folks and it was, I asked and uh, I asked the question, I said, well, let me ask you this. If Quick Take is passed, could we theoretically say, there's this house on the corner, but a new housing development moved in, and we think that blocks the line of sight and it's dangerous, and take their house, even if they owe money on it, and give a market rate which could be less than what they owe? And the legal advice was, well, you could, but who would do that? And I said, well, I don't know, because I had never forgot that $9,000, even though my permit had been in for six weeks. So, I, you know, I've always been real protective, I don't think I have the right to take your property, I just don't. You know, I think it's yours, you worked for it, you paid for it, you know, um, I just, I just personally, I just don't. But I had that lesson then that drove me up there, it was funny, that was the first thing, and we didn't pass Quick Take. Does it slow us down in projects we're trying to do? Absolutely. But if you don't wanna sell your property, you just don't wanna sell it. Or if you do and you want a certain price and the county can't justify paying for it, well then so be it. I mean, it's just, and I've seen where in government, they'll just do it anyway. I can't do that.
Yeah.
You know, but um, that was the driving force that got me interested, and then along the way, um, telling you how I grew up, you know, it was so safe here. The only gun I ever saw, and I kid you, I saw guns, people going hunting. You know, I mean, hunting season, I mean, it was, everybody showing you the new guns and everything. Um, you know, the only needle I ever saw was, you know, a doctor's office. Heroin, what is that? You know, that wasn't my generation, you know, my generation was the marijuana generation, you know, it wasn't heroin. I mean, it just wasn't, you know, and um, you know, that was the, you know, that and drinking, that was the drugs that were out there. And, you know, that scared me to death. Now, I got this little girl, you know, your life changes so much, you know, you watch this little girl in the world she's gonna be in. So, that was driving me, you know, and also too, so um, I wanted a better relationship with law enforcement. I wanted to be able to, you know, I said to Sheriff Evans a long time ago, if you don't ask for it, it's your fault. If you ask for it and I don't provide it, then it's my fault, because you charged me with finding the funding so he can do his job. And I always say this a lot about different aspects, you know, you take like EMTs and, you know, especially all our volunteers, and now we have some paid um, EMTs and our fire people. I don't know how to run calls. If you dial 911 and I'm the guy driving the ambulance, you're in bad shape. You don't wanna see my car driving ambulance. But I got fantastic people that do, but if they go to respond to that call and that ambulance is ill-equipped, that's my fault. So, my pop-pop um, was one of the founding members of the Solomons Fire Department, he threw you in the back of a Studebaker. Kid you not, he drove you up to Calver. Those ambulances now are like many hospitals. I mean, we got remarkable people, the training, I think, is like 300 hours, um, you know, they're remarkable. But they need the tools to do that, and so that's where I take ownership of, you know, if the officers don't have the tools to do their job, if our fire and rescue folks don't have the tools, that's my fault. And I, I'll wear it real serious, I really do.
Yeah. Wow.
I know, it's a lot of information.
That was, that was really good.
Yeah, that was good. Just curious, did the house ever get built?
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, um, and uh, pretty uneventful, um, and um, yeah, I built her the swing set and all that, and then of course, we had the monster, um, which uh, he's now almost 12. And when I say monster, it's not, people go, oh my God, he's a sweet boy. No, he's just big, he always has been, you know? Um, but he takes after his grandfather on my mother's side, this huge, big Texas guy. And um, but even when he was born, he was just this big boy, so just... Yeah.
Wow. Um, going back to um, how you were saying you communicated with uh Evans, how, like the sheriff, how, how do you communicate to the other uh branches within the county government, and how does that communication work?
So, my very first time meeting all the directors, and I will tell you, I had a guy tell me when I first won, he goes, well, you just cause you're county commissioner, pretty much your meaningless staff runs the show. And I'm like, well, not me, you know, I go up there, I'm gonna do everything I wanted to do, you know, try to do. No, you need a good staff. Without a good staff, you're dead in the water. So, I'm not the greatest business guy in the world, but I'm competent enough to make a living for most of my life doing it. And um, the one thing is, staff's everything. If you don't have good people around you, it's like, I like to make, like, make, ah, excuse me, a lot of football analogies. And you know, you always hear, you know, you're only as good as the weakest link on the team, you know? And same with your staff. So, you need good people, and so the first time I sat in a room and they were introducing me to everybody, there was a guy, Ry Sharma, he was head of our roads at the time, and I was telling him how I, what I wanted us to do with the Ranch Club roads, how I wanted us to do this and do this, and he's like, well, you can't do that. Like, what do you mean, I can't do that? He goes, you can't. And I'm like, why not? And he hit me with so much knowledge and so many laws and so many facts that I was standing going, wow, I know nothing. Know nothing, you know, and um, you know, because I was like, well, you know, White Sands had converted to this and Drum Point, and, and I had given all the, and he knew all that history. But he hit me with so much knowledge and I'm not, please, and I'm not the best at anything, but um, I'm pretty decent at, at trying to find, like, I know I need to sell cold beer in my store, but I don't know how to do refrigeration. But I got a really good refrigeration guy, you know, and I think the best person in any type of leadership where they're running a business is to know what they don't do well, and to get the people that do it very well, because it's impossible to go and do everything. Like I said earlier, we touch every part of your life. Well, you need the best people I can find to put in there, and I was lucky when I got here, we had a lot of really good people. And um, going through that room, meeting the different department heads, and I've always been real hands-on, it's just what I know from running a business, you know, I'm very... If you call me with a problem, I'm gonna call that director. I had a hard time working through the county administrator at first. Um, pretty much the protocol had been, if, say, your dog was missing and you couldn't get a hold of animal control, um, I would just call animal control for you, you know, and try to find them, where in the past, you know, there was a lot of instruction to work through the county administrator first, and I always thought that was a wasted step, you know? I mean, 'cause I'm trying to get you a phone call back. What I didn't know, and, and it goes back to just being so naive, the county administrator knows the fastest way to get that done. They, you know, when you first get hired, and I'm not kidding, you don't even know where the bathroom is. I mean, you walk into the building, you, you, you'd never use the bathroom there, you don't even know where it is. I mean, and I don't care where you come from, everybody's job is different, you know, I mean, um, if you were a senator in Montana, it's different being a senator in Vermont, you know, it's not that you're not competent to do it, or somebody doesn't have the intelligence to do it, but there's a learning curve. And so, and that's what they kept trying to tell me, hey, Mike, you have a problem, but I didn't wanna burden them. You know, I knew there was five commissioners, and if everybody was calling them all day long, they'd never get their job done, so I tried to do a lot myself. And um, but I, by doing that, I actually got to really meet these people firsthand, no strengths, no weaknesses. And um, it's been a godsend. I mean, I have pretty much all of them in my phone, and I, and Mark's my county administrator, Linda's my uh deputy administrator. Either one of them can do any job in this county, they really can. And I'm a big fan of, in business, you know, you always have to, your, your number one has to have a number two. You know, they're gonna take a vacation, um, they could leave, you know, could get sick. So, you know, and county government never stops, I mean, you know, when you dial 911, somebody's gotta answer that phone.
Yeah.
When it snows, somebody's gotta plow that road. I mean, it doesn't matter what's going on here, you, you know, we, we have that commitment, we have to provide those services. So, I was real big on wanting to make sure whoever the number one was, that there was a strong number two as well. And it's worked out so far.
Yeah. Wow. Well, on that note, we're reaching 20 minutes, so we're gonna take a quick break before continuing. And we're back to the podcast. We're here with the commissioner, Mike Hart. And Mike, we have a question about the sign at Solomons that says you can't skateboard, or...
There's a sign on the boardwalk at Solomons that says you can't skateboard, I wanna say bike, and then fish.
Roller blade?
Like, like, no crabbing or fishing, yeah, roller blading, that was the other one.
Well, no crabbing and fishing makes sense.
On the boardwalk itself?
Yeah.
And that's probably Mark and Linda, but that was probably a safety measure put in at one point, um, yeah.
It said, "By county commissioner," so we were just like...
It did say that.
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, probably when it, so I go so far back to where there was no boardwalk and you used to sit on the tailgate of your truck and fish, but a lot of that stuff is, is for safety. And that, you know, and having a place to skateboard has come up a million times in this county. One of these days, hopefully at one of the parks, we'll get a skateboard park, but it's, you know, it's, it's for a safety. You know, you get a lot of people walking on the boardwalk and walking their dogs and things of that nature, but that, that's the intent.
Yeah. I definitely think there would be a lot of people that would use the skate park if we had one.
Get them out of the parking lots of the shopping centers, and yep, absolutely. I, if all Site A could ever get some real legs underneath of it, which we're trying, in, I, I don't wanna speak for the other four, but I think it's a strong possibility in the existing park at Cove Point that we have a shot to put something there.
Aren't they planning on moving that?
No, that's gonna stay, and then off Site A, which, you know, where Dominion used to park their stuff, that's gonna be an additional park as well. So, this year, with a little bit of luck, might start seeing a few amenities in there, but it's gonna, you know...
A new place to hang out in Calver? Oh, boy!
Kids, it'll be fully functional.
Um, so on top of being the county commissioner, you're also a local business owner, how did you get into owning a liquor store? Or how does that, how do you manage being county commissioner and a manager?
That's what I was curious about as well.
So, that goes all the way back to, I had been self-employed when I was 21, I bought a few different franchises over in my early twenties. And then I had gone back to work for folks, and then I was, um, actually got into the beer business by accident. A friend of mine who was a Coke salesman, um, for Coca-Cola, he went, sorry, yes.
I was about to say, which, which type?
Sorry, guys, yeah. He uh, he went to go work for um, Bozick Distributing, and so, I know this sounds corny, but their vans actually had air conditioning and heat and a radio. Stuff I drove never had anything like that. So, if it's 10 degrees outside, I mean, I drove a truck for eight years with no heater. So, wow, oh yeah. And um, so I was like, wow, how do I get to work over there? I just wanted to go to work there mostly because the van was so much nicer and everything like that, and so, um, he got me in, and I started learning the business. And I really liked the business, and it's not, um, I'll be honest, I don't, I drink very little, I really do. Um, I, I love the, the brewing process, distill, distilling process, you know, how wines change all the time from temperature and things of that nature. I really love the process, I'm really fascinated by the whole thing. So, I really enjoyed the business while, you know, I'm working it all the time. And um, one day, a friend of mine just planted a seed in my ear, he says, you know, somebody is gonna put a store by that giant. Back to my personality. I got thinking about it all the time and all the time, and I'm like, wow, you know, I don't know. So, when I opened up that store, this is God's honest truth, this is how naive I am.
It does sound like us.
I, like, well, how much money could it possibly take, right, you know? I thought, well, maybe if I could get a loan for 140,000. This is how naive I am, you know, I never thought anything. I had, I had, I had a distributorship, so all I had to do was buy a truck, but I had never had to buy a storefront, a sign up front. So, like, the sign on the front of the store, kid you not, says wine and spirits, why it doesn't say Patuxent Wine and Spirits is you pay by the letter. Makes sense, right?
Yeah.
But I'm not thinking about that. So, when the bill came for $5,000, I'm like, well, but, and that was just for the wine. The original bill was like almost 10, I'm like, oh my God. He goes, well, what if you just made it wine and spirits? I'm like, so it was $5,000, I couldn't believe it. But you, how do you have it without a sign? You have to have a sign on the front of the place.
Yeah.
Landlord's not gonna let you go in there without that. And, 'cause you know, it's his building, it's his everything, but you have to, landlord's your boss. I mean, you have to work, you know, he's got parameters that you have to work within, and, I mean, like even my liquor license, I can't get it on my own. He has to sign for it every year because he owns the property. So, um, but um, I had got it in my head, and I'd been working for somebody for all this time, and I was like, you know, I wonder if I could pull this off? And so, I remember, um, I thought, well, if I could get 140,000, I could, I could probably get this thing off the ground, you know? Some mortgage for my house, everything, you know, every single thing we had. And here, I'm 40 years old, my son had just been born. I mean, it's crazy move, the bubble, it just popped, wasn't the best economy in the world. But I just had this belief I could do it, you know, I just, just, I could do this, you know? And um, so, they couldn't get me 140,000, too late. I'm walking down the road already. So, this guy, Gilbert, um, Gilbert, gee whiz, come on, Mike, this man's a great man to me.
Gilbert.
Gilbert, he owns a, owns a store in Seven District. Um, boy, I had it right there, it'll come to me, but um, Murph, Gilbert Murphy. And um, he uh, he um, came up to me one day and he says, I hear you need a cold box. I didn't have a beer box to put my, you know, the beer in. I'm like, yeah, Gilbert, but I'm out of money. He says, come on, let's get in the car. So, we rode up to this barn that he had bought one to put into, he thought he was gonna buy this store, and he didn't, and then it wouldn't fit into the store he had. And he says, I'll sell to you for 4,000. I said, well, I don't have any more money. He says, you got a credit card? I had maxed my Visa card doing this, but I'd had a Discover card as a backup. And he goes, I said, well, do you take Discover? And he goes, yeah. And I kid you not, he run it through his register, and I said, well, I don't have a way to even get it over there. I'll get it over there. I don't know how to put it together, can't nail nail straight, you know? He put it together for me, a great guy, great guy, never will forget it, but um, yeah, he um, he was, and, and a lot, a lot of good people along the way really helping me. I don't think you do anything in life on your own, you know? But um, yeah, that was, that was a huge challenge, and like I say, you know, I had no clue what it took to be county commissioner. I mean, you know, you see him on TV and you go, well, it's just on Tuesday, right? It would be seven days a week if I let it, but Sunday is my family day. I'm not saying that I don't do things for the county on Sunday, sometimes you have no choice. But um, it has to be an emergency or something that I need to be at, and it can't be done any other time, because, you know, nothing means nothing without your family, you know? I mean, why do, you know, so um, I didn't go through all this for my little girl and my son just to ignore them, you know? So, that one day is a pretty untouchable day, but six days a week, I, I, this is, it, it, no exaggeration. My phone goes off at two in the morning, I'm probably responding at two in the morning.
Wow.
You know, so um, yeah, like I said, I was asking guys earlier, if you ever follow my Facebook feed, um, you know, it's, you know, it's uh, this is what you do.
Yeah. I think I just remembered, I think I didn't set up the other camera, and we've only been recording with that camera for the second, since we've taken the break.
That's okay. You wanna go set it up?
Yeah, I'm just gonna... Yeah, I'm just gonna quickly do that. We could just edit this part out.
Are we good?
Yeah, we're good. What else? We got another thing about Solomon's we were gonna ask, or what was it?
Is the other question on the notes?
Yeah.
Is how much does he control?
Oh, I feel like we already covered that. Um, oh, I feel like it's, we have to talk about how do you think that um, the pandemic has impacted Calvert County and how do you think the response has been? Or how have you been working with the state and federal governments on that?
So I follow it more financially than I do on the health side. Um, not that I don't follow that as well, but the financial piece is, and that's the good thing with five commissioners. Because on my last board and with this board, you see strengths and weaknesses in everybody, but as a team, you try to get it covered. And um, I really watch the financial piece a lot. And I'm gonna be honest with you, my fear is, we're not feeling it now, but my fear is down the road, we will. For the simple fact, you know, when unemployment was going out, you know, it was to four hundred dollars plus to six hundred dollars, it didn't affect our income tax. Um, like it could if it wasn't there. But once that doesn't go out and if jobs aren't restored, we're gonna see a real shortfall. You know, there was people, and this isn't etched in stone, but there was people spitballing at the time when COVID first hit, that the state could see a third less in income tax. That's enormous. And Mark could correct me if I'm wrong, but I wanna say a full year, we were right around ninety-seven million, I think, in income tax. Somewhere around there. So if we lost a third of that, I mean, that's devastating. So, you know, we've handled it very well, I think, as a government. We kept as many services going as possible. We discovered that we could function with people working at home. In fact, it's funny, uh, this is the first time people haven't hollered at me about traffic since I've been on the board. And had a Route Four question about why it takes so long to get from Huntington to Prince Frederick since the pandemic. But um, it, it's, it, you know, out of everything, if you wanna make it a negative, it will be.
Yeah.
I take the positive out of it that it taught us how to function under a certain situation that we have never experienced before. And we'll come out a lot stronger for it. You know, we've learned to rely on technology a little bit more and a little more, more out of the box thinking. But um, um, I am worried that, you know, this year's budget, we're fine. And probably even next year's. But going forward, that's gotta catch up at some point.
Yeah.
You know, there's no free lunches, you know, so um, that, that has me worried. But um, that's why you start, you start working it now. I mean, we have been, you know, our CIP projects, um, which basically are things like building schools and, and things of that nature. We have really scrutinized them um, to where maybe we gotta push something out. You know, cause basic services can never stop.
Yeah.
But um, it's um, and then obviously, um, you know, we, we have people that work with the health department almost daily on COVID vaccines and things of that nature. And my relationship with the hospital, we have some great folks at Calvert Hospital. Uh, we have an open line. Um, and with Linda, who you met earlier.
Yeah.
Linda is really my go-to person with a lot of these type people that she just pow. It's, it's a, you know, if, if the hospital needs something, we're here. You know, um, so it, it, you know, I think all in all, with what's happened, it's, it's, it's been, we've, we've done as best as to be, you know, as to be expected.
Yeah. So who are the other commissioners and what is everyone's speciality? How does that, how does that all work?
Well, I'll tell you what we do for a living, because none of us make a living doing this.
Yeah.
Um, so if you start over there, that's uh, Commissioner Hutchins. He is retired state trooper. And he was delicate. And um, Tim, he is a wealth of knowledge with Annapolis. I have no desire to go to Annapolis. I do not like state and federal politics a little bit. Um, I'm happy here. I um, I like dealing with folks one-on-one. Tim handles it no problem. He's very versed in it, done it forever. Um, Commissioner Weems, Steve Weems. Steve is the historian. Steve knows everybody. He can remember, where I told you guys my memory's so bad, he can remember this road before it was this and that. And Steve has such a nice, genuine personality that I don't think there's anyone he can't talk to.
Yeah.
No matter how upset or mad somebody is. And it's funny because, you know, when they closed the courthouse, we didn't have public comment. You know, Steve said, me and Mike Hart have public comment every day. You know, it's the truth. I mean, people, you know, they'll wait for you in the parking lot or they'll come in. I mean, it's, you know, and um, he's very knowledgeable on a lot of inner workings. Like he, he's been on the uh, Tri-County Commission since I've been on the board. And it's a very selfless job and it's a very meaningful job. It, it brings a lot to the county. It helps with jobs. Not just here, but around the Tri-County, which affects us all. Um, Kelly McConkey, he um, he's a tree guy. And he spent his time on the school board. So he has a different perspective. You know, that's, that's almost half of our budget goes to the school board. And um, so he brings that to the table. Uh, Commissioner Hans, Buddy Hans, um, I believe Buddy's just, he was retired, I believe. I don't want him to speak. But Buddy's a farmer and I know he still actively does that, but um, I don't, I don't know how um, how, I know he's pretty full-time into it a lot of times, but I, I wanna say, Mark Lynn, do you know his buddy? Was he retired from the state at one point? Did, did Commissioner Hans, did he retire from the state at one point? He's just always been a farmer by trade for the most part.
He, he did not retire, sir, but uh, he is a farmer full-time and he has, for eight years, he was the secretary of agriculture.
Which is huge, because that's another insight that he has to the operations of the state. You know, he came in much more prepared than I did, you know, with having that. And he's been here, you know, uh, longer than me, he's older than me. And he's got, he, he's another one that has, you know, a wealth of knowledge of, of, you know, before this was here and before that was here. And he's very energetic into, he takes the job very serious. Um, so we're lucky, we really are. Um, my passport, I was very fortunate. We, you know, we had a lot of different personalities there, but um, there's times I wish I could just do it on my own, you know, I don't have the patience sometimes to wait, but it, but it is good to have to have, I really believe in um, you know, three votes winning the day. And I really like it when we get five. It doesn't happen all the time. But I believe we're a good representation that somebody out there probably voted for at least one of us. So at least their voice is getting heard, you know, somewhere.
Yeah. And so Calvert County's always been in this like weird state of like being almost urban, but also suburban and rural. Where do you stand on, do you wanna keep Calvert more rural or urbanize it? How's, what's your thoughts on that?
So if you're asking me personally, so I keep my personal stuff from, I will never break the law. Never.
Yeah.
Never, never, never. Just not going to do it. But personally, I remember the days of um, one bus picking up Drum Point, Ranch Club in Cove Point. And you know, they always say you can't go home again. I miss those days a lot of times, you know, it was much simpler. We didn't lock doors. That is no uh indictment of the police or, you know, law enforcement, things like that. But it's just, you know, it was very simpler times. And, and the times itself were simpler.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's very, very crucial that we don't grow too fast. And I don't mean that, you know, and where, you know, put the mode up and nobody can come in or anything like that. But there's always these unintended consequences, you know? You have to consider traffic, schools, the infrastructure involved, that can you handle people coming in? Um, each child, and guys, quote me, as a child, eighty-six hundred to educate a person are about nine thousand, but it's right in there. I know, guys, I'm sorry. And, and, but it's, it's right, it's right in that phase. Each child educate, county portion, and it's right close to nine thousand dollars. Well, let's say somebody comes in and they have two kids, well, that's eighteen thousand dollars. Well, pretty much their property tax isn't that or their income tax isn't that. So there's a lot of things with, whether it's Dominion or the Nuke Plant or other, you know, so it's, it's, if you, if you move, if you build up too fast and you need more schools, you're gonna put a real strain on the finances of the county. And remember, we only have one road in and out of this place. And that's Route Four. So um, but um, I uh, you know, there's, so in nineteen eighty-three, and Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, I think a lot of the zoning changed to open up. Is that right? Or eighty-two?
Sir, nineteen eighty-three, the comprehensive plan for the first time created the Town Center Master Plans as a vision for the entire county. There are seven such Town Center Master Plans.
We gotta get this guy, Mike.
Right, right. These two, like I say, staffs everything. And um,
Those guys are good.
It changed zoning to where, you know, before you couldn't have, say, an apartment unit somewhere. Well, then you could. I was in Calvert High School in nineteen eighty-three. Um, but I, and here's, goes back to when we had talked earlier about, quick take and all. Could you imagine living in your home for thirty years and then the commissioners just say, hey, you know what? We're gonna change the zoning and you can't live in your house anymore.
Wow.
Well, these properties were purchased, zoned a certain way. I don't have to like something personally, but I would have to basically change the law. And say, hey, I know you bought this property and I know it's zoned for it.
And we're back and this time with sodas. Right, it's the gang's favorite.
The gang's favorite.
The, the last, the last. Nah, sometimes you just can't speak, you know? Um, let's look at, let's look at the questions I wrote down. Oh, yeah. Um, so how do you stand on working towards like legalization or decriminalization of drugs or any sort of?
So the guy who owns the liquor store, right? So I don't hold moral high ground on anybody. And I will tell you, I answer this just like when the medical marijuana piece came here. Going back to, I refuse to break the law. Right? So if the federal government says it's legal, I will do whatever the federal government says, you know, on a personal thing, you know, um, you know, it's, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a physician. Um, you know, with the data that you hear from the federal government, it's, you know, it's illegal, you don't touch it. So I'll be honest, I don't spend a lot of time on it. Um, I don't, like I said, I don't hold any moral high ground on anybody. Um, but um, I, I would never condone anything that's unsafe for anyone, you know? And I'm not a control freak. I mean, shoot, my brother went on a great white shark dive, kid you not, in a cage and all that. I think he's crazy. I think it's dangerous. But you know, it was legal to do and within his right to do that. Um, you know, in, in a perfect world, um, you know, we would be drug-free of everything. You know, even like those sodas you're drinking, you know, the sugar, the caffeine. Um, you know, people, you see some people that can't start the morning without coffee.
Yeah.
You know, so um, everything has its price. Um, but you know, at the end of the day, the healthier and stronger somebody is, the better we're all off gonna be, you know? I mean, yeah, I hate going back to finances all the time. But the healthier you are and the stronger you are, the less pull you put on the medical system, you don't miss days from work. I mean, there's a huge cost and all that, so you know, I would hope that people's choices, you know, like if I was talking to my son, you know, and, and, you know, that his choices would be um, as healthy as he could be. But I don't, um, I don't, you know, it's, it's not my job. Um, and I don't mean set the wrong way to uh, tell anyone how to live. You know, basically it's to follow the laws. You know, when you hire me, I take an oath to follow the laws that are on the books. And um, but I would, you know, I would, you know, and a personal thing for, cause I love the community the way I do, I, I would, I would hope that uh, you know, if jumping off a bridge was legal, you would still choose not to do it.
Yeah.
You know, um, that, you know, I, I believe people are adults and of their own mind and that uh, um, that they would do the most positive and productive thing they could do.
Yeah. And um, going on that, do you consider yourself um, like strongly affiliated with any political party or do you try to think of yourself more as independent?
So I don't wanna insult anybody, hurt anybody's feelings. When I told you guys I didn't pay attention to politics, I really did. You know, and um, I got stirred up because of my own backyard. You know, we don't do partisan politics in Prince Frederick and I'm glad we don't. You know, um, I, I, you know, people say, what are you, I'm a Calvert County at first. I really am. You know, um, you, I represent even the ones that hate me. You know, even the ones that say, boy, I'm gonna make sure you don't get reelected. I'm gonna, you know, you, you represent them too, to the ones that don't even follow politics. You know, um, it's a, it's a great question, you know? I hate what modern politics is like today. Number one, we can't talk. And we have to label it. You have to have a label, you know? Well, you're a Republican or you're a Democrat. Eh, can I be a person? You know, and unfortunately, the system does not let an independent succeed. Think about it. So in the primary, so when I run, let's say you guys wanna vote for me, but you're independents, you can't. Let's say you're Democrats, you can't, because I'm a registered Republican. Now, how is that right? You know?
Yeah.
I mean, when you look at that flag, that flag shouldn't ask you if you're Republican or Democrat. You know, it says, are you a US citizen? Is your loyalty to this country, not to a party? You know, and then that upsets people when you won't, when you won't jump one sides like that. But I just think it's too complex for that. I think, you know, when I, when I was growing up, you know, it was um, and maybe it was always there. I just didn't see it as a kid, you know? But it just seemed like Americans were more focused on um, family and, you know, good schools and good jobs and stuff. I didn't turn on TV then and watch the Republicans and Democrats just go at it non-stop. I think that is so ridiculous. And, and I watched, I watched an interview with President Obama. And he said, and this goes both ways, so please don't, I'm not bashing parties. He said that there was, I was watching the interview and he said that there was guys he served with in the Senate that were Republicans that said, you know, Barack, I like what you have, but if I go with you, I will lose my seat. You know, and, and that goes both ways, you know, in this job, I've had an opportunity to talk to senators and governors and things of that nature. And that party line stuff's real. And, and I can't stand it. I really can't, you know, at the end of the day, I, I'm paid to watch over Calvert County, but this is home. And I'm not saying I don't care what happens in the rest of the country, the rest of the world. But you know, at the end of the day, are my kids healthy? Are they getting an education? Mom and dad able to, to, to come home when it's snowing on, on a safe road to the best of my ability? Those are the things I worry about. I really do, you know? I'm fifty-two. You guys run the show here in a few years. You know, and that, that's the truth. And I go back to my, when I was talking to you guys about football, about the weakest link, you know? If we don't do our jobs and prepare you, if we tell you, you know, oh, it is a free lunch out there. Yeah, you were born, you're special. If we tell you that, when times get tough, you won't be able to handle it. And I'll tell you, as we get older, we're not as strong. Sometimes our thoughts wander a little bit, you know? I mean, it's, it's just the nature of life and you guys are so crucial, you really are. It sounds like, like uh, something popular say, but it's not. Kids are everything. They really are. Your, your fresh ideas, you know? I mean, this stuff you're doing here, I don't even understand it. You know, this wasn't out, I mean, when I was a kid, like I say, I had a black and white TV. You know, so I, I, I grew up in, so, so funny. Our phone number was three two six, uh, boy, I forgot those. But anyway, you didn't even have to dial the three two six. Let's say it was three two six. You didn't even have to dial to three, two, six, let's say it was three, two, six and four sevens, right? You could just dial six and four seven. Now, you know, then it went to an area code, now my daughter heard, I told her to call um, Pizza Place one time and they still had an old analog phone. And she dialed it and she goes, Dad, what is this? And she held it up and was going, err, err, err. She had never heard a busy signal before.
Wow.
Why would she? Cell phones don't do that. You know, and so um, you know, we waste a lot of time worrying about what party's right. Right and wrong should still rule the land, morality should still rule the land. You know, I, I love this, that we wanna tell people how far they can go in life because of what they think. Could you imagine, I mean, think about, go back to George Washington, George Washington beat a superpower with farmers.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, I know our farmers are some of the toughest people walking the earth, man. They get up at, before that sun's up and they work till the sun's down. But the British were trained, professional, military. And these were guys, they were farmers, they were blacksmiths.
Did pitchforks.
Yeah. And he beat a superpower with no radar, no surface-to-air missiles, you know, none of that stuff. Fired one shot at a time and we were outnumbered. I mean, you know, the American spirit has always been, you say, I can't do it, I'll prove you wrong. You know, and you know, just like little side conversations we had, you guys talking about restaurant, I love that kinda stuff. I love that you guys are doing that right there, that's so inspirational that um, that you know, young folks want to do things that you didn't do when I went to school. What, what is a podcast? What is that? I, I text you, I didn't know if it was TV stuff. So um, yeah, I, I, I really, and, and I'm not smart enough to talk about there being no party thing and all that, but I just, we waste, I, I spent last week watching a lot of hearings up in Annapolis. And I'm so mad when I'm done watching, furious. Cannot believe, now I hear some good stuff, don't get me wrong, I hear some people with some really nice thought out things. But when I hear, and let's say we're just talking about this bottle, they talk about this bottle like it's just an object. But it's got families, it's got dreams, it's got its life's work into something. And with a pen stroke, with a pen stroke, you can take it away. It's so wrong and it's so wrong. And you know, it's justified, well, it's business. Well, I got the votes.
Wow.
I don't like to mix religion and politics, but it's part of who we are. Some are not religious at all, some are, and I never put it part of my decision-making, but I will tell you, on a, on a personal level, and I mean this with all sincerity. I truly believe I will stand in front of God one day and I will answer for what I've done. And I'll tell you, I've made a lot of mistakes in life, I mean, if you're behind me, you're gonna sit for a while. You're gonna say, Mike, what were you thinking? Why did you think that was funny? And I've always been, always been a practical joker, you know, but I'll have to answer for that, you know, and, and you would hope as you get older that you, you try not to make those mistakes and you learn from those mistakes. And I sit there and I watch this and I go, people, you know? These are people's lives. We all as politicians stand in front of you and go, please put my magnet on your car. Please put my sign, I care about you, but do ya? You know, you'll have people say, oh, my card doesn't care about this, my card doesn't care about that. And I've always challenged any of them, if you don't think I do, show me the courtesy to come see me. You know where I'm at, probably three hundred days out of the year, you know? And don't just go on Facebook and say on this, give me the benefit, send me an inbox, give me a chance to answer at least. And I watched some of this and I watched, I watched some people really say some good and thoughtful stuff. But having to say it because there's somebody over on this side that is just, you know, couldn't be further off the point. Can you imagine, you know, rain tax, and I don't even know the history of this, but you guys remember rain tax? And we never qualified because we didn't have a hundred thousand people. But there was probably somebody said rain tax and then I don't know, maybe I'm completely wrong, but I just envision it. And everybody laughed at him and said, you're gonna tax rain? Well, yeah, you know, if you look at the footprint that it does, it runs off the roads, does all this. And they probably laughed at him for a while, but after a while of hearing it, didn't seem so crazy anymore. And Maryland put in rain tax and I remember the uh, governor of Texas made a statement, he said, you know, in Texas, we pray for rain and Maryland, you tax it.
Wow.
Wow.
You know, and now thank God that's off the books because it's ridiculous. People have enough strain in life, but to worry about, well, I hope it doesn't rain this year, if you're a farmer, you need rain. And Maryland wanted to tax that, you know, so um, you know, as much as you say my vote doesn't matter, it does. You say, I don't need to be involved because it doesn't matter, it does. You know, um, I was a guy that just wanted to build a house. And when my impact fees went up nine thousand dollars, and I gotta tell you, I never had a prom date, I didn't have a homecoming date. It cracks me up that I won a popularity contest. That's what politics are, it cracks me up, I can't believe it. I, my, my best friend in school was probably one of the most popular guys in schools, in school and you didn't even know I went to school there. You know, and um, I, I'm blown away, I, I, I'm just blown away that folks voted me in. I, I really, I really, really am blown away, I um, I uh, that's why when you said, you know, Commissioner or Mr. Hardwitz, I'm like, Mike, I've always been Mike. You know, um, it's just what a, what a privilege to grow up in a town, have a business in a town and actually get to represent it and try to do something good for it. I, it's just such a privilege, I just can't uh, I really can't put it in words.
Wow.
Wow. Wow, yeah. Uh, going on that, so your campaign slogan was, I like Mike Hart.
Uh huh.
Why isn't it, I heart Mike Hart?
It's awesome question. And I knew you guys are too young to notice, even my wife didn't know, it's a great question. I love history. So Dwight Eisenhower, if you know Ike, right?
Yeah.
Ended up being president, his slogan was, I like Ike. Right?
Yeah.
Well, you need something to remember because you guys see the nine million political signs out there, they all look like a blur, right? But I remember as a kid, certain signs that rung a bell that I remembered and I said, you know, I like Mike though, cause I mean, folks knew me down home. You know, I grew up in Los B, folks knew me down, but they didn't know me in Prince Frederick or Honeytown or Dunkirk or the beaches or anything like that. So I was like, you know, something that at least will go, I like Mike, you know, maybe, maybe it sticks for a second, you know? And um, I just thought it would be different and um, you know, trying, you're trying to get people to notice you to at least get an opportunity to talk to them. Um, and um, yeah, just my name, Mike, just happened, it just lucked that, you know, his was Ike and Mike, so I stole his idea.
Yeah, and to kinda wrap us up, if you don't mind, the, so, how do you think the um, the Black Lives Matter protest in, in Prince Frederick was handled in that whole situation?
So that is so funny. You know, it's not funny, but it's funny, so it almost goes to politics, right? It seems like if you're on one side of the political thing, um, you're okay with something and if not, you condemn it instead of looking at an issue. You know, the issue shouldn't have any political wrapper on it whatsoever.
Yeah.
Um, I have always had complete full support for the sheriff's office. And um, well, I, I watched it and um, they were criticized for the tear gas piece.
Yeah.
And um, you know, now I'm not on the ground. Uh, I, I will give, and I'm not, please, I'm not throwing rocks at anybody, but I will state some facts. So the protest, I love it that the sheriff walked with them. You know, um, the sheriff showed, you know, that it back to you represent everybody.
Yeah.
So if there's somebody that feels, hey, you know, um, there's a problem here and it's not being heard, we have to force this to be heard. This is how we're gonna do it. Um, I, you know, all the way up to the courthouse was fine, all the way back. And then, you know, at the point when, you know, your own private property unfortunately, where it stopped. Folks don't wanna hear that, well, you know, could you imagine if it was in your front yard? If all of a sudden there was five hundred people in your front yard and said, we're not getting out of your front yard, we're gonna do this. You'd be on the phone to the police. And you would say, hey, I want them gone and the police would have to, would have to follow the law? So I feel good that no one was physically harmed. Um, there was a window busted out, there was a lot, not a lot, there was a few people that said a few disparaging things that, you know, um, was unnecessary, but it was a time where tempers were high, very sensitive issue. And um, you know, the, the tear gas was probably the only real controversial thing of it. But I'm not going to, going back to where I say I don't run calls, I'm not gonna question the sheriff's office and please, I'm not trying, it's like I'm dodging it.
Yeah.
But um, if they felt that was the way to make sure that nobody was physically harmed, permanently harmed. Um, but this would disperse the crowd and get everybody to move and, and you know, what's not seen on that is, I talked to an officer that talked to a person and said, hey, she, she was visibly, you know, from the tear gas, if agitated, can I get you some water? And she says, no, 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 thank you, she says, I don't recognize you, where are you from? And she said, I'm from Virginia, this is the fourth one I've been to. And you know, that's within people's right, but I worry about more, you know, how was Calvert County depicted in that? You know, how did we look? I have researched this to the hilt and if somebody has other knowledge, please bring it to me. But for, I've never been able to find an incident where we've had a, an officer here shoot somebody in the history of this county. Let me think about that. And it goes back to when I was saying how there wasn't that many of us, we all know each other. You know, we, we, we've gone to school with each other, we eat at same restaurants. These officers, these men and women out there, they're your neighbor. You know, they don't get out of bed and I can tell you, I know, they do not get out of bed and want to harm anyone. And I always say, you know, most calls that start with nine-one-one, nine-one-one, what's your emergency? This guy is beating his wife, say.
Yeah.
They don't know, is it a weapon, whatever. Now, the clock is on to get there, to try to settle situation. The job is so difficult, it's such a difficult job because you truly have their life in your hands. Wow, what a responsibility, you know, I mean, what a deep responsibility. It's easy to sit back and watch on TV and go, how did this happen? How did that happen? But I tell everybody, until you, just like military, any job, a teacher, anything, till you've walked in the shoes, boy, to judge them. It, it just, you know, you're just not qualified, you know? And so when I grade out that whole thing that no one got hurt, you know, that part's a win. Did a message go across? I think so. Because you know, there was another one that happened down Solomons. And I went and watched, that's home, that's my neck of the woods and I sat there, I would have answered anything anybody asked me to best my ability, no one did. Um, and I sat and watched and there was completely peaceful. There was no interaction with law enforcement or anything. And um, I don't know if one had anything to do with two. But I think there were lessons learned that we don't have to let it get to this level. That, you know, they were on private property and when it's time to go, it's just time to go. And if you wanna continue, then just get a permit and do it again. But you know, you can never, you can never say there's a reason to, to avoid the law. You know, once you start interpreting the law going, well, you know, I know that law's there, but right now it just doesn't apply to me. You know, now if it needs to be changed and there's a good reason to, then the public should be involved in changing that law. You know, if there's something that's that big, that's when a referendum goes out and the public says, you know, I mean, like seat belts, didn't you used to have to wear seat belts? You guys don't remember that, when I was a kid, nobody wore a seatbelt. I'd sleep in the back of the car and wake up when we got to grandma's house or type thing, you know? We know seatbelts save lives and we have data for that and all. And so um, you know, it was very, you know, that's one of those things happens in a split second. So um, I think, I think law enforcement, um, I think they did what they thought was going to be a way to disperse the crowd, no one get harmed. And um, I don't think there was any arrests, don't misquote me, could have been, but I don't, I don't think, oh, two, Mark says. Um, but um, if you look at the other cities around this country and you saw how that happened. I mean, I would be traumatized for something like that to happen here in Calvert County. This is, everyone here is family. We all know somebody here, I don't think there's one person living in this county that doesn't know at least one other person here.
Yeah.
You know, and when I went to school here, everybody had to know each other because there was only two high schools and everybody used the same vote tech. So um, yeah, it's, it's such a difficult job. And um, you know, it, like I say, not one incident, and I will tell you, I have complete faith in the sheriff's office that if there was an incident like that, it would be handled, you know, as soon as possible. I, I truly believe that.
Yeah, and on that note, I think we're gonna wrap up the episode and interview, thank you for coming on.
Thank you guys, meantime.
Yeah, um, is there anything you guys would like to say before we end this off?
Uh, is there any message or anything specific you wanna say to the people?
Oh yeah.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I think we, we covered a lot of ground, um, you know, like I say, I, I say it a lot of times up here, I'm so fortunate to live here. Just think if you turned off the news and Facebook for a week. You would walk around this place and go, wow, I'm in utopia. Think about it, you know, you know, wow, look at this school, looks like a museum, you know? Wow, there's no potholes in the road, remember when they closed down a part of BW Parkway because people's tires were getting all banged up and stuff? You go, wow, you know, um, look out, look at the water here, you know, look at the gorgeous, you know? I mean, you walk in our parks and all that, I mean, just think if you, if you had all that negative going, I, I like to say I'm a half-full guy. Sometimes my, my wife says that I don't even have a glass, but I like to think it's half-full. And um, but think about it, if you just for that week, put this thing down. You know, don't get on these rants that you watch, you know? And instead of looking at the negative go, wow, how fortunate I am that I live here. When you look at all some of these other places that are having all this, this trouble and all this, you know, and um, just think it would just uh, it would give everybody such a nice mental holiday. You know, I mean, just think if you just, you started, took, you said, you know what, next Monday, when I come home from work, I'm gonna turn off the TV, I'm gonna light the grill, I'm gonna ask my kids what they did today. I'm gonna ask my wife how her day was, you know, and uh, we're just gonna talk to each other for a while, what a crazy concept. Instead of this. Yeah. Uh huh. I'm not hungry, I uh, I ate uh, somewhere. You know, really, what's it all about? It's amazing, right? It's amazing. I mean, it's, it's, you know, there's nothing more precious than human life, nothing.
Yeah.
And life's so short, I mean, you guys are real young, you know, I'm in the fourth quarter. Now, somebody who's eighty would say, oh, you young guy. But a guy who's twenty, if I said, hey, would you like to change and be fifty-two, he's like, are you serious? And, and you know, and it goes so quick and I remember folks would tell me that, you know, but it's so true. If you just took that minute to go, is it really that bad? Is it really that bad? I know what they're saying on TV, but hold on, let me open up the door. I don't really see that out here. You know, there's a, there's a, there's a TV station that calls their weather storm. Now think about what that says and I'm not gonna call anything out, but could you, let's call it Mike weather. So if Mike weather was storm, Mike weather, right? And I come out and go, hey, guys, today's forecast could be seventy and sunny, a nice breezy, go out there and have some fun. Why is it called storm? But it is, you know, I mean, you know, and that is, you know, that is this realm that's built, you know, of the fear and the worry and the drawing sides and all, and it's just really not that complex. Sometimes figuring out the weather is just going, eh, sunny out there, it's probably gonna be like that all day. But we will, well, it says it's gonna rain, well, is it? And I hate breaking it down that simple, but sometimes life's just really that simple. And we make it complex because we feel we have to take sides. We're all Americans, at the end of the day, we're all we got, we really are. We're not the most popular country around the world, I know we probably think so, but we're really not. You know, I mean, we are one huge dysfunctional family, you know? And, and like I say, you guys are everything, you really are and um, so uh, I tell people all the time, if you, you, you guys have all the pressure on you to be the next teacher, cop, attorney, judge. You don't have to reinvent the wheel to make it better, maybe just opening up the door for somebody, you know? I love, I'll walk down places and my kids say I'm crazy all the time, I speak to everybody, my grandmother used to call it speaking, you know, and say hello. And um, hey, how you doing? Hey, how you doing? Oh, hi. And it, well, when I was a kid, that was an hour conversation, how you doing? I'm good. How you doing? I'm good. How are you doing today?
Yeah.
You know? There's nothing wrong with, you know, just being nice to your fellow man. There really isn't. You know, but you know, it's, you, you've seen it. Oh, sorry. Sorry. See the study on people that were getting run over by cars? Cause they were looking down at their phone, walking through traffic.
Yeah.
Isn't that insane?
That is insane.
Thirty years ago, you'd go, that's impossible. That could never happen. And they would go, oh, what's a, what's a, a mobile phone?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think, and, and I, I love what you guys are doing, so.
Yeah.
Anything I can do.
Has anyone ever told you, you kinda sound like Jerry Seinfeld?
Oh, no, no. They, they say I'm a lot of things, but not Jerry Seinfeld. No, no.
Yeah, when you kinda get into your upper register when telling stories, it sounds like Jerry Seinfeld. I don't know, anyone else?
I don't know what Jerry Seinfeld is.
Me neither.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it sounds like that.
I think we definitely need to get you in for a more casual, uh, conversation. Like, this has been great.
This has been great. Yeah. Thank you for coming on. We've been Three Goons Podcast.
We, we haven't done like a, like a family reunion in so long. It's really weird. I mean, the, the last major one that I went to was the Langford one, when we all met up at that firehouse.
Oh, you remember that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So are you related to Langfords?
Yeah, on my mom's side.
Who's your mom?
Uh, Karen Reed.
Huh?
Karen Reed.
Stop it.
Yeah. You didn't even know.
No.
I, I said to you, I said my mom. Because, because I, I asked her to ask you. I knew you, I knew you two were related.
Yeah. Now it clicks. Oh, man. Yeah. Well then, that's your pop op too. Well, no, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.